It's 6:00 PM because it's a reorganization meeting. I will hold the meeting to work. And tonight we begin with reorganization. So I have a nomination for chair for the Halifax School Committee.
I'll make a nomination. I'll nominate Summer.
Is there a second for?
A second? I accept.
Seeing none, I believe we take a roll call vote by name and then we'll have a vote for if that's acceptable. Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Keating?
Yes.
Ms. Laws?
Yes.
Ms. Schmal?
Yes.
Congratulations for chair. I turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, we can continue reorganizing, maybe just to talk with a ticket and then we'll start our meeting when we get to the downed subcommittees. We can reorganize them. Is that okay with everybody? Everybody cool with that? All right, would anybody like to make a nomination for vice chair? I personally would like to nominate Gordon.
Can we have a description of what you do in those positions?
Sure. So Vice Chairman basically just runs the meeting when the chair is not present. That's pretty much all they do. The secretary sometimes takes notes like in executive session or if our secretary is not available, which I don't see Danielle. So I guess we're gonna need somebody to take meeting minutes for tonight. And then Pilgrim Area Collaborative is the collaborative that is in our district that we work with. That's actually kind of more of a responsibility to be involved in that. We have to attend their meetings and you know, you kind of take the long minutes at their meetings and then come back and give a school committee report.
I agree. I think that's a question as well.
Oh, yeah, sure.
So you asked for nomination for Vice Chair.
I did.
Okay, then Ms. Laws asks about that position or how we go about it. Now, would Ms. Laws and Ms. Carroll have an interest in that? I can talk to anybody about this.
That's fair. I mean, yeah.
I mean, that's why I was asking to know what was required because obviously the three of us are, you guys are the seasoned ones, so you know.
Yeah, basically, I mean, what else does the Vice Chair do besides run the meeting when the chair is not present? Maybe sometimes help set the agenda if need be, but typically it's pretty much.
Yeah, I mean, the chair basically sets the agenda, works with the other chairs for the other committees, talks to the superintendent. The chair has access to legal counsel. Everyone else has to go through the chair to get access. So.
I don't know if I can nominate myself, but just because you're already on the board of selection and have a lot on your plate, I'd like to step up and do more. So I don't know how that works if I nominate myself or? Can you nominate yourself?
Yeah, so it takes a, so the typical process is there's a nomination, is there a second? If two people are moved and seconded, then there's a vote.
Okay. Okay, so now we have two nominees, but we need a second or not second for nomination first.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
So what happens is because I nominated Gordon, we need a second or not a second for Gordon. And then we say, are there any other nominations? And if Gordon can say, yes, I'd like to nominate myself and then not, then she would get a second or not.
Okay.
So Gordon's on the floor right now. So if there is no second?
I can second myself if that's what you.
Okay, you can second yourself. Okay, so now are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate myself.
I'll second the nomination, Ms. Laws.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so now we have one on you?
Well, you have two, so it's, you say either Gordon or Lauren.
Who says? Me?
Yes, you're the chair, so you ask. So you should, you could do a roll call vote. Say who are you gonna vote for? So you can do the same thing that.
You don't do it individually?
Well, you have two nominees, you have.
Correct, so I'm asking for a name, not a yes or no?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll vote for myself.
It's close for discussion, right?
Well, you can discuss it if you want.
I just want to start like. No, I second you. So are you gonna vote for Lauren or for Gordon to be the Vice Chair?
Gordon.
Okay, so I'm Gordon's up.
I'll vote for myself.
I hope so.
I'll vote for Ms. Laws.
Okay, so Gordon's the Vice Chair.
Good.
We got that. Okay. Now we need Secretary. Would anybody like to nominate themselves or nominate someone else for Secretary? Don't everybody tell what they want now?
So the secretary takes meeting minutes if we don't have a secretary here or goes and signs the letters. So if we don't, so there's been cases.
I apologize, I'm having trouble hearing.
Sorry, so the secretary would sign the letters that we send sometimes or the secretary would take meeting minutes if we don't have a recording secretary. So Danielle's our recording secretary, who's paid by the committee to take the meeting minutes. But if we go into an executive session where the recording secretary isn't there, the secretary takes the meeting minutes. So somebody that wants to take minutes and is capable of doing that, who do you want for Secretary?
How, I mean, I've read minutes, you know, before, so I guess just, you know, is there a crash course in picking for that? Just make sure you don't miss any of the.
If I had this, thank you, I'd like to mention a bit to that as well. In addition to that, I'd like to know, so the secretary on this board is responsible for the notes in executive session and also for signing out correspondence, signing correspondence that's going out. But they're not responsible for taking notes and making notes during the meetings?
Not if we ever.
We pay somebody to do that.
And that would include correspondence the school committee votes on?
It would be like we're gonna send a letter to the governor or we extend a letter thanking Mr. Durkey for his years of service and whatever, things like that.
So the secretary can write those letters? Or typically if we send a letter off, so if we're gonna send a letter off to Mr. Lynch thanking him for his hard work, typically the board will vote to do that and the chair would sign the letter if the recording secretary writes. But if there's no recording secretary, then the secretary would write the letter.
And the meeting minutes for executive session are very, very truncated and brief. Like we talked about this under MGL, whatever, which we can give you, and the vote was, you know, duh, 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 and that's pretty much it.
I mean, I saw, yeah.
So, not to interrupt, I apologize, I'm not trying to be rude to the board. Ms. Laws asked if there is a crash course. There is a crash course if it was asked from the state.
Oh, okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
And then the other responsibility is if the two of us, so if the chair's not here, the Vice Chair isn't here, the secretary runs the meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
So is anybody gonna take notes?
What?
So if we're done with the session, I'll make the nomination.
You can still walk after the nomination and the second.
All right, well, I'll nominate Ms. Laws, the Secretary.
Okay. I'll second.
Oh, wow.
Okay, Mr. Andrews. Wait, are there any other nominations for Secretary?
Feels like possible to.
Seeing none, Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Carroll?
Yes.
I'm yes.
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 Okay, PAC, Pilgrim Area Collaborative?
Not it.
Not it?
Can I be open for discussion or?
Yes, it's actually pretty, it is pretty wonderful. I was gonna say it was a great thing.
It is, it is. It's just, it is a commitment. That's what I'm saying.
Have you ever been there?
I did sit on for a little while and it's.
It's in Pembrokeshire.
Oh, it's in Pembrokeshire?
Yeah.
There before this town. Oh, there, they do.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, okay, I remember it's there. Are they in the DMV now?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, they're, that's where they're operated.
I was gonna say it's close to your work, but you know.
Which you just did.
That's right.
So that position is a commitment. Basically, you're a sitting member on another school committee?
Yes.
So that's what.
Also, the collaborative, which I'm familiar with, so each town, Kingston.
Yes, has a representative on their board.
Sheila Vaughn was the chair this past year, so. You interested in Jim?
Can their meetings are what, once a month?
I think they meet once a month. I think it's a Thursday night meeting. And then you get a call. I mean, it's obviously, you think about to be committed to getting calls during meetings.
Ms. Carroll?
Are you? I think that it's all you, Jim. I'll nominate for Pilgrim Area Collaborative.
I second Jim. Do you accept the nomination?
Oh, accepting nomination. Yes.
Okay, if at any point you find that it's something that you can't double anymore or just have a conversation with us and we can fix it.
Is it possible to do like co?
Do we have?
I don't think we have an alternate.
They're not alternate?
Oh, there is.
You'd have to check with the PAC.
If you'd like, I can email them and ask them if it's possible to share the responsibility.
That seems like a good compromise to find, you know.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I would like to.
Okay, well, he's, in the meantime, he's. I don't feel like we need to talk for you, but.
No.
Excuse me, I'll follow.
Summer, I can't give a lot of time on the board, but I don't think.
You do. I don't know what everyone efforts to.
I can give you. I haven't said that. I'm not buying it.
I think Gordon's fine, Sheila. Why is the phone ringing? Shows up late, makes phone calls in long meetings. Who's this guy?
He even wears jeans. I was like, I wore his skirt for his board and now he's dressed.
All right, thank you. Nope, I'll talk to her.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, she'll just keep talking.
She said we can vote in alternate.
Okay, all right, so would anybody like to be an alternate now?
I will.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I will second that. Any other nominations for alternate? Mr. Andrews, two, have Jim need to alternate.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
So then you two, once your emails are working, can figure out who's going to what meeting or, how's that sound? All right, so now I'm gonna open our actual meeting at 6:05. Congratulations to the United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, the Lord, and justice for all.
I'm gonna shut the D C off.
So first on the agenda is acknowledging and scheduling visitors. Anybody here tonight who acknowledged or scheduled to speak? Ms. King? You ready to move on?
I would like to press to speak during the diversity and inclusion subcommittee discussion since I sit on that today.
We have a liaison who's gonna speak to the, to the meeting that already happened, so if you'd like to speak about it, you can speak now.
No, I would like to speak during that.
Okay, but I'm telling you that if you wanna speak about it, you can speak about it now.
Well, how do I know what I can speak about if you guys haven't discussed something yet?
Do you have something to bring for the board?
No, I would like to hear what is being discussed and then.
Yeah, you can by sitting there in the audience.
And I will, and requesting to be able to speak during that discussion.
And I'm telling you that this is the portion for public participation.
So you're telling me no, is that you're saying I cannot speak during the discussion?
You can speak now during public participation.
So again, you're saying no, I cannot speak during the discussion of the inclusion subcommittee?
Correct, I'm telling you, you can speak now during public participation. You're welcome. Ms. King? Oh, Kim Vicki, I'm sorry.
It's okay, my husband honestly should have taken my last minute notice and he would have done the same. Hopefully I won't do a piece of crap. Take it a moment, sorry.
It's fine.
I'd like to thank the previous chair, Mr. Andrews, after months of allowing me this opportunity to publicly speak to the board. I'm not here because I disagree with causes. I'm here because I'm extremely upset with the climate and I don't wanna add to the negative climate within town. And I have a few requests of the board that I would like you to take with an open mind and would like the community to take with an open mind. And for those that aren't aware, and now that you're chair, Summer, you can speak with Jill. She's been aware of different things through different communications, but we're friends involved and we can't discuss any of that during public meeting and I won't be answering anybody's questions if they reach out to me either for these reasons. I had requested all of the public documents and emails regarding the pride flag.
We don't have a pride flag.
Well, when this was ongoing and the situation first started with the classroom things.
I'm referring peace flag.
Oh, I'm sorry, the peace flag.
I just wanted to clarify.
I would just advise the chair that I would let the person speak and not have a discussion.
I just wanted a clarification I won't ever talk about.
I just, I would caution you to just let her speak so we don't go into a discussion on the item.
Okay. Which we, which you guys can't do under the open meeting law anyways, you'd be violating it, so. Yes, you're correct, the peace flag. I thought the pride event was wonderful. I look forward to it next year. But with the peace flag, I have two children in the school. They were currently in second and fourth grade this year. I don't believe the administrative administration handled it very well and I requested, as I can, everything publicly available, all the documents, emails. There was over a thousand emails. The price tag is over a thousand dollars if you want to get these documentations for yourself. I was lucky, I had over eight hundred and ninety-five emails and correspondence dropped off in my mailbox, so now I have to go through all of those versus the over twelve hundred emails to see what I'm missing. So the cost will be much lower to me. But what did come to my attention, and I think that the public deserves to know, is that although individuals may not have personally wished to have litigation or sue when they contacted the attorney general's office, the attorney general can bring litigation and lawsuits forward to the town. I believe that that is something that the general populace in the town of Halifax deserves to know. But the whole situation became much larger than it needed to for the students. My second grader came home and asked if she was a lesbian because she's holding hands with a friend. I find that to be extremely wrong. My fourth grader is much more mature. So we were able to do research and open and discuss the flag much longer. We went all the way back to the early nineteen hundreds, which was fine. But one of the most disturbing things I found in those communications was that Mr. Evans said that this was gonna cause a mental health problem for all the students and suicidal ideation things. Well, my only point to that is it's not only this one minority group that struggles with self-harm and suicidal ideation. Everybody struggles with self-harm and suicidal ideation. And as a board in a district, we need to address every single student regardless of who they are, regardless of who their parents are, because everybody struggles with self-harm and suicidal ideation. As a parent, I can tell you my own son attempted suicide on April 7th of this year and it was in regards to what was going on at the school. It wasn't another student. It happened to be the way administration handled something incorrectly over the years and a staff member at the school. On top of losing his grandparents in Great Depression and on top of COVID. Okay, he's heterosexual, he admits to it. I'm a girl scout later. I have ten girls that regularly attend. Half of my troop self-harms or have suicidal ideation. This is a problem we need to address. I know that there are multiple staff at the school, teachers, paraprofessionals, administration, that in the past have taken the youth mental health first aid course. I would like to request from the board that the paraprofessionals be required to take it and if we need to, if, not me, if you guys need to have negotiations with union staff and other things, to have step raises as they do at town hall and other things for those who have different certifications and such, that those discussions happen because it's gonna be very important. I ask this because one of the paraprofessionals in the school, the Monday, we had a tree fall off to our house. It split the tree. The tree split the house clean in half, pushed my house forward. Building inspector condemned it. He had to, okay? We were technically homeless. On Monday, my son mentioned something to a paraprofessional at the school. She told my son to stop lying and over-exaggerating. Had this individual had the training, it's very possible the situation would have been handled differently. So I just think that that's important and that I'd like to see everyone do it. It's free. The Suicide Prevention Coalition does it. Jeannie Babcock's an amazing woman. I know that. The administration is working with the high school and other schools within our district, so I think that for no increase in the budget, that it's a fabulous opportunity for the elementary school and now that COVID's lifted and the mental health challenges that we're going to have, I think it would help better prepare us because we have wonderful staff at the school, but they, I don't think the district's ready. Honestly, I don't think any district's ready for what potentially could come when we start school, the end of August, September. And I'd also like to request that those on recess duty and details have their CPR, simple CPR. I spoke to Kendra today. This is something that I had been speaking with the principal and vice principal about prior to COVID because I'm sure everyone's intelligent enough to know that seconds matter. And if Nurse Brian is with somebody that's having another emergency or they're somewhere in the building that it's gonna take a little bit to get to, especially different areas of resource, for the schools and school staff. Kendra did believe that the price went up to ten dollars per staff member. And if I'm not mistaken, because this could have changed because my numbers are old, there was about ten to fifteen employees that did recess duty and my family be willing to donate to the school just for that cause, for the ten to fifteen, if the ten dollar price mark is correct. If it's higher than that, we may not be able to do that. But we're comfortable with the price tag of a ten. And we're more than willing for the safety of all students and not to harm the school budget, which is already gonna be tight next year, to do that. And as a parent and as a person who has been in the community since 2001, I'd just like to remind everybody that every single student has civil rights. And if my ten-year-old was allowed here tonight and was allowed to speak, he would tell you that he does not feel like he belongs at the elementary school. I think what would help him is the little signs going out. If we could add the stripe white back into them and have something unique just to our district. I don't believe that is against what the diversity and inclusion or what was brought forth by the AG and the administration with agreements. And I think that would help others in the community on the other side feel as if they belong. And lastly, when it comes to the diversity and inclusion committee, I'm not against it. I'm slightly against the way it came about, but we're leaving something gigantic out, huge, belonging. You can welcome anybody. It doesn't mean you're making them feel as if they belong. If we're gonna do diversity and inclusion, we need to do a real dibs. We need to do diversity, inclusion, and belonging. Without the belonging, our diversity, inclusion is at one hundred percent and we'll only put on a Band-Aid on something. And I don't wanna see a Band-Aid approach. I wanna see a full approach. And I wanna see everybody feel as if they belong, everybody. Because everybody deserves to belong, no matter who they are or what they are. And it's just that piece I think is missing and I think it was extremely overlooked because discussions weren't allowed to be had and I don't want all the details of them than what I've written, the emails that I do have. I think if there was more open-mindedness and had individuals not rushed or pushed committees and administration into defensive positions, that belonging would have been there from the beginning. And I was really, really saddened to read in some of the emails just how cruel and nasty some people will be. And it really did, it broke my heart, because we're all humans. It doesn't matter who you are. And I think that most people that sit boards or do volunteer really do try to keep their personal beliefs and opinions to themselves and really stick to statute. And I know that per Lauren's statute, that everybody except for those that are in same-sex religions or consider themselves gay, are protected under statute. So there's also the option for the school committee in the district to have a policy that would allow students that identify to be into same-sex accommodations, no different those that identify as transgender or binary, because they are accepted and already under statute. So I think that can be an option for the district to discuss. I don't know how you do a policy, how it would be written. It's just an out-of-the-box idea for you to please be open-minded about. Because if the issues are really as strong as some suggest they are, I think that that would be a great area to look at so those students also have accommodations. And I'm also really bothered as a parent in 2021 that students that have invisible disabilities are not addressed more. It shouldn't be as difficult as it is to get a 504 or an IEP. Those students shouldn't be bullied constantly. Those students should feel as if they belong. And they shouldn't feel any different. Some may struggle academically, others may be great academically and such. But that's another area that we really need to look at as a district. All I am willing to say, as a mom with a student in the school, I never should have had to hire an attorney to get my kid what he needed. And I'm gonna leave it at that, because I have to leave it at that. You can talk to Jill's chair now for proper. You can talk to Jill's chair now or proper avenues will follow. We'll just leave it at that. And I just really like the town to heal. And I think too, there are certain individuals that sit the Diversity and Inclusion Committee that I don't think realize that as a volunteer to a board, that they are unpaid town employees. And I don't find their behavior on social media and other platforms to be very professional in their role on the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. And I think it might be wise for the school or town have any more lawsuits if possibly, and we don't need any more rules or regulation. It's very unfortunate I even have to suggest this, is that there be a social media Facebook policy in place. I think that it would protect the district, and I also think it would help healing of the town. Because there's a lot of things that are said or taken back or deleted, but that doesn't mean that 80% of people on social media already haven't screenshotted what you had to say. And you're speaking to someone who's been guilty. Okay? Because I'll tell you, serving as a state commissioner, we didn't have it in place. There were a few of us that, there's policy put in place because we were, you recommended for it. It's a learning curve. I know some of these individuals are new. I know they're extremely passionate. And again, it's not the cause. I support the cause. I do. I do not support what comes out of individuals' mouths. I don't support the hate, and I don't support the way it came about. I honestly think we're all better than that. I do. And I'm just going to leave it at that because then there might be questions or it might get really ugly. Yes, I understand that I just joined the potential hate mailing list and social media platform, but hey, so be it. I need to say it. If I didn't do it, if I didn't come, I wouldn't be doing my job as a parent. And my kids matter too. You know? And I'm open. You want to talk to me, talk to me. But come to talk to me respectfully. I know my children aren't perfect. You have a problem with them? Come to me and talk to me. Just because I'm a Christian doesn't mean I automatically think, or you shouldn't automatically think that I'm going to discriminate against you because that's not the case. I've said it on Facebook and I'll say it again. The only thing I need to do is love others, is Jesus is love me. And the only person and heart I need to worry about is myself and my children's. It's not my job to judge others.
Madam Chair.
So, and I'd just like to thank you and thank you, ex-chair for, ex-chair, previous chair for your role. It's been a long meeting, and I know it's difficult, and I know I bring difficult topics up. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk. Thank you, Gordon. I know it was hard. And just to...
Well, I'm interested in time to...
I was just going to say, we need to leave the room in about 15 minutes, so I don't mean to cut you off, but...
No, 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 no. I know that. I've been carefully choosing my words, and I've had to take a few seconds to find better words, Gordon. So I clearly stated, hopefully respectfully, without hurting feelings, what I had to say. And I'll be honest, my husband would have much preferred I sent it in anonymous letter, but I'd be... Exactly. So here I am, face forward to it, so...
Well, thank you for taking the time to speak with us and sharing your perspective. I appreciate that.
No, thank you, and thank you for listening and just thank you. I know it's hard, and thank you for all that you do, and I hope this board doesn't have to entertain or go through what I've read in the multiple emails that I have. I just, I hope that. And thank you. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is review and vote regular executive session minutes from May 4th and regular session minutes from May 12th. Has everybody had a chance to read them? Their emails are just out there in front of us relatively short.
Madam Chair, I would move the minutes, but I believe we need to hold the executive session minutes because I believe we touched on negotiations on those. So I would, I would move them and hold for the executive session.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Warrants have been circulating. We'll do the single signature warrant situation. Are we all caught up? I did stop and talk to...
Yes. The last couple warrants from the beginning of June. You did sign 11 warrants totaling $577,079.79. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Sorry it took me a little bit to get there, but I got there initially. Correspondence and reports. Do you have anything? Because you were chair prior to tonight.
I don't.
Okay. I don't either. Anybody else has any? Send them to share with the committee.
Unfinished business. I don't have any. No, there's nothing listed. Future agenda items. So I have this added to the agenda a few years ago for the social group with the committee because I wanted to give the committee an opportunity to voice anything that they would like to see on a future agenda in that little section. So if at any time, you can either tell me now or you can send an email between now and about a week prior to our next meeting if you would like to request something to be on the agenda.
I would just request an update for COVID policies for the next meeting.
Yes, planning warrant is in here at 7:00. All right. Subcommittees. So policy is the first one. So typically how this works is we have a policy subcommittee that meets twice, sometimes three times a year. It's not totally often, totally frequent, I should say. The last time we did meet, we comb through the policies that you have in front of you that were emailed to you. So typically what happens is you're given a paper copy at the meeting. We call it the first reading, but what we do is accept as the first reading, but we use the actual reading, and then you can take these home. And if at any time you would like to give your perspective on all of them, add an amendment, change some language, whatever you think you would like to alter in the policy or have discussed at the policy subcommittee meeting, you can send an email to the people who sit on the policy subcommittee, and they can bring it up during the meeting for discussion. So this isn't binding tonight as accepting as the final draft. This is just the first round of these policies. Does that make sense to everybody who's new? Okay. So we used to have Allison...
So I, I will...
You'll do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will ask to approve the first reading with a waiving of the actual reading of policy E B C F A E E A E E A E C slash E E A E G C A I C slash I C A I D I I B J H J L C C J L C C.
That's on there, folks.
Okay. R, oh, sorry, J R A and K I.
So I'm going to make a friendly amendment to your motion and correct...
Strike that second one?
Strike the second one and also E E A V C slash E E A G. You lost the G at the end.
Sorry.
Because it ran under an energy, but yes. So can I get a second? Put up? All right. All those in favor of accepting the first and waiving the actual reading of these policies? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Negotiations. I have an update. We are scheduled to negotiate with the teachers' union on July 19th at 6:00 p.m.
So when do we, am I allowed to ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. When do we decide who's on the subcommittee?
Tonight.
Oh, okay. All right. I didn't know if we could do it now or if we're going to...
Yeah, we're supposed to do it like right now, actually. It's part of the agenda. So maybe we go through and do the updates from the past, and then we'll reorganize and put new people. Does that sound good, Kendra, buddy?
Sure.
All right, cool. PAC? Actually, that was Allison.
So no update?
No update. I will reach out to her and see if she had a meeting in between her last school committee meeting and now. I should have done that prior to tonight, but I want to say that we maybe didn't. And then moving forward, I will send an email to Jill to let her know that, or Brian, one of us can let her know that you guys are the new PAC, so they can loop you in to get the schedule for their meetings. I'll just write that down for myself. So forget it. All right. Youth and Rec, that's me. And lots of know, I had a conversation with Dick Steele. All my notes on my desk network. So let's see if I can pull them out of my head. They did do a STEM program through June at the elementary school, which they were thrilled about that they were able to offer because the parents who had paid for their child to participate prior to COVID were able to participate that or towards the end of the school year. So that was great. That went very well. They are not just refinishing the div floors this summer. They are going to re-sand them and rewind them and like completely give the whole floor a makeover, which is fantastic. And we're very fortunate that we have such a strong Youth and Rec department here in Halifax because they really do provide a lot for our kids in terms of sports, which is great. On that note, in the future, he is looking at replacing, if not totally repairing, but I think he said replace the tennis courts and the basketball courts that are down behind the school near that small red playground. He, it's going to be like $200,000 price tag, he said, but he's not in a hurry to do it. He's going to go out and get some bidding. It might not happen next year, but he's going to see what he can do. But I thought that that was great because he knows that the town utilizes it, and they might not be able to pay for it all, so they might present the town with an article at town meeting, which is typical. But he did want me to note that because he knows that the school utilizes those courts also, that he would have a conversation with them to make sure that they paint the four square, squares on them and whatever other game they play down there because...
Madam Chair, seeing that we only have the room for another five minutes, I think it would be prudent to ask our business director to give the closeout information so we can vote on that.
Are we moving to a different room?
We can go downstairs to the selectmen's room.
Okay. So can we just, I'll just, can we just...
Because we don't have, we don't have another camera operator.
Area 58.
You're the one coming tonight, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So he's got to take the planning board meeting?
Yeah.
So are we still zooming the school committee meeting or no?
I don't, I don't have the setup downstairs.
Okay. All right.
So I would, I would request that we get the closeout done.
All right. That sounds good to me. Everybody okay with that? Because we're going to have to move it out of order in the agenda. That's all right.
Make a motion, take it out of order.
Are you making a motion?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Sorry if it was wrong with that.
No problem. I will be brief. I'm going to do my part. Your package, your real package tonight, very loud, back of the pages. It's a copy of our final to report for year ending June 30th, 2021, along with a cover sheet that kind of displays where we ended up at the end of the year. And thank goodness we made it successfully for the year, and we've had some unusual events, but we did the best, everybody did the best they could. Within the budget, we have some savings. We have savings on our regular transportation because the school started nine days late at the beginning of the year, and then Wednesdays that we're not, we're not transporting students during the hybrid portion of the model. So there is some savings there between, between that and also between homeless transportation. We do not have any events that shape a homeless transportation. So we have some savings there. The big struggle for us with our special education area, they had, we had several movements to our community that affected both our transportation and tuition accounts. As of end of the year, our transportation in special education is a deficit of $27,900. I have requested a line item transfer to move funds from our regular day budget. We do have money left in the special education portion of that to offset these costs, and the town does permit that. They allow us to move money within our accounts. And then our special education tuition account, we have a balance of $150. But we have had, we've really struggled to share. We had to dig deep into our circuit breaker funds. We should be trying to reserve what we can, and we're, we will be going into next year with at least $100,000 or less in our circuit breaker fund than we know in a little bit. So we will really be watching that from the very beginning of the year. Some of the other items I wanted to mention too, that the regular, regular day budget was ending with a surplus of $84,678. That's before the $28,000 is moved. So once that happens, we will have a balance of $56,889.11 combined with $150.10 from transportation, $60.48 from tuition, and then audit of vocational, we have a surplus in that account this year of $36,867.25. Are there any questions? I'm sorry, that was the average.
Christine, do you need any motions to support?
I think we should accept this as, motion to accept it as presented, but I do have, after that, I do have one more question that I do need a vote on.
I would move to accept as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I forgot I have two. Single signature signer, would you like to be, to be that person? Or would you like somebody else to have that opportunity?
I would like somebody else to have that opportunity.
Okay. I'm glad I asked.
That would be fantastic. So that just means that every...
When we're not having a meeting, we would need somebody to come in and sign the warrants at the town hall.
Yeah. So it's usually every several weeks, Christine should communicate, you know, and says, there's a staffer warrants in Sandy's office, who's a town accountant in here. Can you just come by and sign them? It's just like this, basically. I stand there, flip through them, sign them. And we did that because that way we don't have to wait till all of us sign them when we move to a six-week school committee schedule.
And we would be remotely also.
And be remotely, yeah. So it's just as simple as coming down and signing. So if anybody has, is around more often during the day than I am now and would like to swing in and help Christina, that would be fantastic.
Jen, are you interested? Both are, or Jen?
I, well, currently I'm working in the admin schedule Monday to Friday, eight to four, you have, I can be an alternative to that, but I'd be happy, but I would be down on your deal.
My orders are the same as well. I could, I could most likely swing that. Yeah.
Okay. It doesn't have to be on the same day.
Yeah.
I'd nominate Jen for the signal.
Signature signer?
Signal.
Single signature.
Signature signer. And Mr. Keegan is the ultimate?
Accept. Okay. Do you accept? You accept?
I accept.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then one more quick item. The town has asked that we take a vote on, currently, the school lunch employees at Halifax Elementary are considered town employees, not school employees. It's become a significant difference because of different page cycle than the page cycle ones. So we'd like to bring them all into one page cycle so they're on the exact same schedule as everybody else in that building.
The two, what, the two different? One more time?
We have, the town has this payroll cycle that's slightly different than schools' payroll cycle. And we'd like them all to be together on one page cycle since they're all these employees in that same building.
Right.
And they asked them to take a vote of that, just so we can make that transition from a considered town employee to a school employee. And I said we don't ask for that to happen.
I don't believe there's any other like financial ramifications to that, correct?
No, the funds are still coming, being funded by the same account. That doesn't change. It's just the end date on their check.
Okay.
The pay date will stay exactly the same.
Okay. So it doesn't happen when they're actually paid?
No, they're paid exactly the same time they are currently.
I would make that motion.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we'll take a recess and reconvene in the selectmen's office downstairs. Selectmen's meeting room? I'm sorry?
I guess as long as you want to close your laptop.
Yes.
Okay. Just so you guys know that are new on the board, the money that's surplus in our accounting in the year was back to the town.
So I would make a motion to move our meeting to the selectmen's room.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.